What the.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Good evening, everybody. I am going to call this Seju Lee Council, City Council Meeting to Order. It is 6:00 PM. I am Mayor Julia Johnson. Please stand with me, say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
One nation.
Nation.
For God. Thank you, everyone. I'll go through roll call real quick. Like, Councilmember Allen?
Present.
Councilmember Owen?
Present.
Councilmember Lavaca?
Present.
Councilmember McGoffin? Councilmember Diamond?
Present.
Councilmember Burns?
Present.
And Councilmember Kesty?
Present.
Thank you, everyone. And then looking to approval of the agenda, is there a motion for the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
A second.
Is that McGoffin? I just want to make sure he wasn't looking up.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we had a motion by Councilmember Burns, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Consent agenda items one through four. Do we have a motion?
Here, I will make that motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Lavaca. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carries. We do not have any special guests or presentations tonight, so we'll move right into staff reports, and I will begin with you, Chief Wagner.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. From our standpoint here in the Fire Department, we continue to have some busy days. Couple fires this week. We went up to Lyman Saturday night about midnight and spent some hours up there assisting with the fire. And yesterday, we were out until about 9:00 PM when it started to freeze on a fire east of town here on Peavy Road. No injuries in either of them, and we're able to get Red Cross involved to get displaced victims of the house fire last night placed and some help. COVID, we're still dealing with some staffing issues with some exposures and stuff here in the city and within the department, which is making things a little but handling accordingly with proper PPE and working together as a team. And other than that, the good news is we did some testing this last week before last and got four new prospective residents for up at Station Two. Unfortunately, they don't have all their certifications, but like we talked before, we're gonna try to do some stuff in-house and get those four folks up and running. We're hoping somewhere around April and May we'll get them to move in. So that's some good news on the horizon and go from there.
Are there any questions for Chief Wagner? So with the COVID chief, where are we at? Are we on the downside? Is it clearing in a significant manner, or should we still be quite careful and conscientious? I know you've been sitting in on meetings regarding that, and I'm curious as to what you're hearing.
On my last meeting we had with public health in the county, the good news is Dr. Libran is saying that there's no new major variants on the horizon that are of concern. The Omicron is definitely not as lethal as what we've had in the past. Hospitalizations are up. Our positive rates are extremely high, higher than they've ever been throughout the entire pandemic. But with the vaccinations and the boosters that have happened, we're not seeing the severe sicknesses as we've had before. But all of our hospitals continue to have divert statuses, where we don't have the availability to take folks to the hospitals or have resources that aren't available because of the staffing and the saturations of the emergency departments. They've, in fact, Providence and Everett has also had some extreme issues there over the last few weeks. And we were advised this morning at 11:00 AM, they finally came off of their diversion status and were opening things up to normal business, which is a good sign. St. Joe's and United were at over 70 hospitalizations up there with COVID patients, and they're now down into, I think, 60 range, which is lower than they've been in weeks. And United General got a waiver to increase some bed counts over there. It's gonna help our county. So some good news, and the expectation is that we, they are hoping that we have plateaued and we'll start to see a decrease or decline in in numbers as we move forward here in the next few weeks. So good signs all the way around, hopefully.
Right. Thank you. Moving on to Chief Tucker. Good evening.
Oh, thank you, ma'am. Just to kind of go along with what Frank was saying, we've had, you know, we went for so long without any people come in or testing positive for COVID, and now we've had five or six of our officers over the course of the last couple of weeks. We've done our COVID or contact tracing and all that, and been working with the guidelines to try to keep everybody else healthy. We haven't had any serious illnesses due to it, but we had some people that have taken a little bit harder, just like the old flu was when it would catch us during certain times of the year. So if this variant has gotten us, where we had pretty much escaped most of it for the last year and a half. So it's hit us pretty hard. We've just had a report of one of our officers going down today, and we're shuffling people to keep shifts covered. So COVID's hit us pretty hard. Another thing that Charlie asked me to speak on was, and it's something I spoke with Councilwoman Kesty the other night, is homelessness response. I know that's an issue that has been in front of council, and it's something that we're all facing. I guess really, I can, I could, I'll do this quick, and you can ask any questions when I get done there, but you can kind of divide our response to homelessness issues into a couple of different areas. One is covering homeless people camping out or occupying private property, and people coming to work and finding somebody sleeping by the front door of their business. Or, you know, somebody finding somebody parked on their property living in their car. Those are fairly easy to do. Our norm and has been for many years now is to contact those folks and get them to move on, offering whatever services we can, giving them a lift if they need it. You know, up until the last, oh, up until just within this last year, we've never had anything like the small housing setup that Burlington's got. So that's been a real plus for some of our chronic folks that have issues all the time. Our challenges are when people are in, in public areas. And the public area is a little bit tougher because there's been case law and precedent set for not moving people along unless, I mean, there's a pressing reason, and we have to be able to offer them alternatives. I know it's probably been about two years ago now, we had a subject who's now camped out along the Boulevard in Burlington. But when he was in town, he would camp out at various places. He was on the corner of Borseth and State right across from James Market for a long time. He camped out next to the ball field right on 20 at 20 and Ferry right there next to Food Pavilion, and we had a lot of questions about why don't we just move that subject along? Part of that is we didn't have a place whenever we were having issues with that one. And one of the things that we have to be mindful of is once we move somebody from where they're at, we really have to be, we have to be careful about what we do with their property. They, they still have an ownership right to their property, and unfortunately, they typically leave a pile of debris wherever they land. So a lot of that poses some challenges, and when we displace some of our chronic homeless from one spot to, we're just moving them to another. So in all reality, we have a couple of eyesores that will come and go. We are so much better off than Burlington and Mount Vernon in that regard. I know when this became a huge issue a few years ago, they did a kind of a best guess count of the homeless in kind of the Central Valley here. We had three to five, depending on the day of the week, and Mount Vernon had roughly 200. So if you put that in perspective, our homeless problem really wasn't as pressing. The problem is, is the homeless that end up in Cedro Woolly really don't have many resources. And they are camping out in our business doorsteps. We had one homeless subject that was camped out on a park bench for over a year right outside the dentist office on the corner of Metcalf and State. That subject ended up getting beaten up during an altercation and never recovered from that and passed away in in a care facility. So these are some big issues. We don't have a lot to offer the folks except for a level of compassion and some assistance in getting them somewhere where they can get help. I know on one subject, he was living under a tarp, and when we went to help him out, he had, he had gone and really left what we thought was just a pile of garbage. And what we found out was that was his property, and to kind of make it up for him, we actually cleaned it up and it ended up in a dumpster. But to help kind of alleviate the problem that we caused for him, we ended up going over, I went over to Coho Industries and bought him a tent so that he, at least something, it's probably been about three winters ago. And there was a lot of snow when we were dealing with it. So this poses a lot of challenges. We have to manage their property. We have to manage them. And this almost never entails just somebody being homeless. Most of the folks that are just homeless, they're passing through, going from here to there somewhere else. Those are really easy to deal with. We can give them a hand up. We can give them some options for food. The food bank is always helpful and all that. If they're mobile in a vehicle, sometimes we can find some sort of gas vouchers or something like that in the system. But that's almost, that's, that's the unicorn of the group, the homeless that we're dealing with that are easy. The others are the homeless with the, the big three homeless, substance abuse and mental health issues. And those, there just is not the systems set in place for that. And with some of the restrictions have been placed on us, it adds another bit of an edge to that. We had a young lady who was probably a really good candidate for some sort of sex trafficking, and she refused any assistance from us, a very attractive 19-year-old with substance abuse and mental health issues that was living on the street, had a family and just had no, no desire to go there. Our concern was that she was going to run into the wrong person, and we believe she did at some point. And for a while, she was a missing person with the sheriff's office. They did, she did get found and she's fine. But those are some of the challenges that we face. One of the biggest things, and I know it's a controversial setup, but the tiny houses that Burlington has set up has took, has taken a lot of pressure off of our system or off of our, our load for those people that are sleeping on the street. And we just really have them kind of coming and going in town here. We'll see a tent pop up, and a typical response for that is one of you or somebody from the public will get ahold of us, say there's been a tent popped up in this property. I believe it's, you know, a property that nobody's living on or working on, and nobody's monitoring it. Can you check it out? We go and check it out, and if we find somebody there, we'll offer them whatever we can, whatever the circumstances require. And most of the time, they just move on. And unfortunately, that's the best we can do sometimes, is just push the problem somewhere where they can get better help than we can offer. But that's kind of a, a broad strokes view and a little bit of detail on a problem that then every, this is happening everywhere. This is happening in the Midwest where I'm from. It's happening all over the place. Washington is a fairly well-off state, and we've seen what happens whenever this goes rampant. I don't think any of us want to see what the streets of Seattle look like in our, in our streets. That's why we're on it, but we have to be very cautious and very smart about it. And we have to add that level of compassion. That's just a normal, good, human thing to do. So we're juggling, and we're not exactly sure. Some of those balls are a little bit too big for us to juggle sometimes, but I think we do a pretty good job on managing it. But we still, we need your input. When you're seeing something or hearing something, don't hesitate. You can call 911. You don't have to call me. You don't have to call Dan. You can just call 911 and let us know. And that gets into our system, and our patrol guys kind of keep an eye on it. So that's kind of the rough, broad strokes thing. Is there any questions from anybody on the council on this?
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
How you doing, Chief? I was wondering, are we able to determine what caused those individuals that are here to become homeless? Was it job loss or something like that? It seems like in our area, there's definitely opportunity for work or first, I'm just wondering, like, what, what in our city is, is causing individuals to, to have to step from a position of maybe working and being in a home to stepping out into the street without?
Well, just kind of more, just kind of knowing the people. It's mental health and substance abuse issues. And they cannot maintain a residence. They cannot maintain a job. One gentleman that I've spoken to has family who want to help him. We actually had to have his mom parked down the street because he thought she was out to get him for some reason. We would go to her car, get stuff out of her car that she would hand us. We got him a new pair of boots from her, a new jacket, food, a backpack. He's the one that I bought the tent for a couple of years ago. And he has family that care about him. He has all of the resources available. He chooses not to avail himself of them. He's not taking his medication, that kind of thing. So it's typically a substance abuse issue coupled with a mental health, and that's another one, juggle that. Which one causes the other? Does a person have mental health issues because of substance abuse? Or they gone to a substance abuse route because of their mental health issues? That is almost everyone we are dealing with. The ones that don't have those issues that are just homeless because they don't have work, there's, there's typically the ones we deal with. We don't deal with them much. We really don't. We offer them help, you know. I bought them meals and, you know, gassed up a car or two over the years. And that's really the only touch we have with them. Found a young man parked in his, next to his neighbor, next to a friend's house in a camper just the other day. I got called out there and asked the guy to leave. He says, absolutely. I didn't know I couldn't park here. I got, I'm hooked up to a friend's house because I have nowhere to go. And I said, well, you got to find a better place than this. This is actually a driveway. You can't stay here. And he was completely amenable to that. So it's really not just people out of work. They're there, but they are not ones that we deal with.
So you guys are dealing with a lot of mental illness and substance abuse is the main focus of a lot of that that we're seeing here. Is that a pretty high rate around here?
It's, it's, it's pretty much the same anywhere. That's, I mean, you go walk down, go walk downtown Seattle, go walk downtown Olympia, go to any place that's got a covered area in Mount Vernon, go over to Hobby Lobby or Goodwill, and you'll see a crew of people sleeping under the eaves there, and those, those are that, that problem.
And I've been over there. I've been in Seattle. I spent a couple of weeks, actually a couple of months in Seattle recently. But I don't see that here in Cedro Woolly. That's what I was asking, like, in Cedro Woolly, I haven't seen like a tent, or I've seen them pop up like you were saying, but not like that kind of a thing. Is it, you're saying it's countywide, but okay, but Cedro Woolly, are we seeing an increase of that?
No. No, we're seeing kind of just the average. A few people, these are changing up, but years ago, we had five solid people that were homeless all the time, and they, a couple of them spent a couple of years on the street downtown Cedro Woolly. But we aren't much. Al, come on, Diamond, it looked like you were ready to ask me a question.
Oh, I was just gonna say that you were asked this when I talked to Mr. Bush today regarding that. I've actually received several phone calls and been stopped recently regarding the homeless people that, and I'm not sure if it's one person or multiple people are rotating. I don't know because I don't see it personally. I did drive through town last night, and there was people's personal belongings in the doorway of Styles Law. And, you know, I have a picture of that, just it's sitting there. There was no person around, but belongings, a shopping cart full of stuff with bedding materials underneath in the doorway. You know, I've seen blankets outside Oliver Hammer shoved in the corner that somebody probably had left there from the night before. It looked like it had probably seen a few nights there, or at least along the streets. I received notification that there was a tent in the old Wells Fargo parking lot last weekend, last Saturday morning. You know, and so it's those things that are popping up that is concerning in the downtown district when we're trying, you know, we've got businesses here. These are private buildings, private property. And, you know, I've also been advised by a couple of different business owners that over the years, you know, their doors have been urinating on, and all of that stuff goes hand in hand. Then we've got crews that need to come around and, you know, and officers and response from the Fire Department and, you know, all of that additional resources that are necessary. And so I really just, you know, I thank you guys for, for dealing with it and doing the best you can with the parameters that you can. I just, I really hope that we keep a, keep an eye on it and, and don't Seattle our Cedro, so to speak, and watch this become an issue where we have more and more people coming into town and creating this because, you know, because they see somebody else doing it, and it becomes acceptable because, quite honestly, from the, from the response that I've received and heard from people in just the last two weeks, it, it's definitely not something that's wanted by the, the people and the businesses around here.
No, and you're right. It kind of feeds on itself. But honestly, I'm, the mayor called me on a guy, the guy, I think it's the same guy. Don't know where, remember what he was doing. The one of us at Styles, she called me. We'd already, we were already headed that way, or I think maybe her son had seen him out there too. And he, for some reason, gravitates to that area. But another thing comes up is that we'll get, you know, we'll trespass somebody from somewhere if they do something that requires that. So we've got a couple of guys that are pretty much trespassed from every business in the central business district. And, you know, next thing you know, they've got, then they get charged with trespassing because they violated a trespass order. And then we've got to go hunt them down to drag them into court. Well, they're not responding to mail because they're not getting mail. So it's a vicious cycle. But we are on it. As soon as we get a call on it, somebody's dispatched to it. So if you're, if you're getting questions that your constituents are wondering what's happening, tell them, do, do not hesitate to call 911 because we will get somebody there as soon as possible. I've got an eager bunch of youngsters who hear stories of the wild and woolly days of downtown Cedro Woolly. And this about, is about as wild and woolly as it gets on a regular basis. Some of this is dangerous. Some of these folks are seriously mentally ill. Last fight I was in was with a young lady I mentioned earlier, and I was wrestling with her, trying to get her from running out in traffic on Highway 20. So it's an ongoing struggle, but it's a, a regular struggle. We've got the resources to deal with it almost like a, a basic medic. We, we put a bandage on it, but then we've got to ship it off to somebody else for better help, and we don't have that.
Right. Now, and how many are actually from around here, or are they being, coming in from other places? I've personally spoke to a couple over the last couple of years, living right here in town, then walking by my house and wanting to just have a conversation while I'm mowing the lawn, right? And one guy specifically told me that he, he was, he received a sack lunch and was put on, put on a bus and sent here from Oak Harbor. And his buddy came from Everett. So is that something that we're seeing is people getting, just getting bus tickets and coming here from other areas? Kind of like people moving, cities and counties moving their problems out, or, I mean, is that a normal thing? Because most of the people that I've seen here, I don't know that they're from here.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of a toss-up. There's a few, that happens everywhere. Sometimes we get somebody that says, hey, you guys suck. I want out of here. And so where do you want to go? I want to go to Burlington, and we're like, okay, we'll give you a lift. But usually, we try not to do that because that is really just shifting the burden on to Burlington Police Department. So that happens sometimes, but Oak Harbor's actually got a really strong outreach program. They've got a couple of churches that are supporting a lot of the homeless to the point of attracting homeless to like their downtown business core.
And that is not, we want here.
Right. So, yeah, we're not seeing that. We had that, we had heard that, that Seattle was shipping them to Mount Vernon. We really ever substantiated that. I also heard that I stole a lot of cars around here when I was a kid growing up. That wasn't really true either. So stories sometimes get embellished. You have, you probably a quarter of them, I'm just guessing off the top of my head, are local folks, and there's one of them that's really a big problem when he's out of jail or out of a facility that is a local boy.
Right, right. I know there is one local that I've, I've seen him around frequent, frequently, and there are situations that come up with, when he's, depending on where he's at or what his state of mind is that day. You know, but I do thank you guys for what you're doing to try to address it in the situation that it is right now with, and I know that there's a lot of regulations and stuff that are going on, and quite honestly, I'm a firm believer in, in sometimes, you know, stepping in is the first thing to, to be able to get them some help. And when you're not able to step in and help them because of the situations, that does make things more difficult. I just wanted to really be aware of the situation and, and kind of get an overview of what we have to work with and to deal with and really, you know, let everybody know about the comments and the, and the concerns that are coming through right now simply because it's become a little bit more visible. It's also very cold. It's cold out, you know? Nobody wants to see somebody live in, in a tent down the road or in somebody, you know, in, in a doorway. You know, so there's, there's that bit of compassion as well that goes, that goes along with that. But, you know, trying to find us some sort of solution, and I know first step is taking some of these people. And, and some people are just choosing, as, as you've mentioned in a couple of prior stories, they have opportunities, they have family, they have places to go, but they're choosing not to. And it's how do we deal with those people that are then choosing to live in the doorways of our downtown businesses and, and urinating on the doorsteps, you know? And then we've got our city, city crews cleaning up after it, and we've got this downward spiral that we're just constantly chasing, and I just, I really don't think that that's a situation we want to put ourselves in. And so I, I mean, anything we can do to try to minimize that and, and keep our streets here clean and our businesses clean and confident that they're not going to come in and open the door and, and step in something or, you know, be in trouble for moving somebody's personal belongings out of the way, you know, and those sorts of things. And so just, just so we can keep it, keep an eye on all of that and, and keep things safe around here for, for our community.
Well, if we can, we can, I need to schedule a time to get the Public Safety Committee together. Probably a good topic for that. And if any of you have
Just that, yeah. It sounds like this is a topic that really does need to be discussed and possibly some solutions provided for the city. So I don't mean to interrupt this conversation. I think it's a, I think it's a good and healthy conversation, but for the sake of other business, we will step on. So Chief, just any last report that you have, or have you completed your report?
I didn't mean to give you as much as I did. So that was enough. I didn't mean to give you as much as I did, so that was enough.
All right, thank you, Chief. Um we will move on to Finance Director Debbie Burton.
Sorry, did you refer to me? I'm having some, okay, sorry about that, I'm having some audio. So I apologize. Um I'm going to defer my comments. Um I I know the mayor sent out an extremely nice letter. Um explaining that I'm am going to be leaving the city, I'm going to be retiring at the end of February, but I'm. I'm 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 here to help a transition team whenever that is in place and. Um I really appreciate all of your support, um and I uh I wish everybody at Cedar Woolley well and I will be watching as things. As things move on, thank you.
All right, thank you, Debbie. Um Public Works Director Mark Freiberger.
Good evening, Mayor, thank you. Good evening, Council. Uh just a few things to report on tonight. You approved a contract for the fencing repairs at Riverfront Park tonight and I was asked to give a little report on where we're at with that overall. Um that contract, we'll get that out tomorrow for uh execution with the contractor and. We have already executed a smaller contract with P and P Excavating, who also does our on-call repair work uh to do the. Gravel repairs down there, they'll be starting, P and P will be starting uh next on on the seventh of February, two weeks from now. To do their work, uh the. Material source that we had some concerns, they had ran out during the flooding, they have replenished enough to. Move us forward, so they should be able to complete their work within a couple of weeks, I'm guessing on that. And then the fencing, I believe it starts on the fifteenth of February, um I wasn't able to confirm that with Nathan tonight, but it should be pretty soon that that. Will start, that'll probably take about three to four weeks to finish all of that work up down there at the park and the fire training site as well. The mayor and Charlie and I have been quite busy these last few weeks, uh as I think we reported the beginnings of, uh meeting with the legislators and. We've, we've submitted quite a bit of material to them, uh we're, we're doing two things, we're doing a. A capital budget request to support the uh. Water, the wastewater and the public works buildings to complete that site and that's been submitted to both the House and Senate for that. Senator Wagner and then Representative Eslic have been uh supportive of that and that's in process. Uh we've also submitted requests to be included in whatever comes out out in the way of a transportation package for the. Jones Johnliner Trail Road Quarter Project, these are the two priorities that. Uh you identified and we are carrying forward uh for funding at this time. And uh so we'll know more towards the end of the session on on whether those things survive or not and we'll keep our fingers crossed on that. Beyond that, uh the construction work at the wastewater treatment plant and the public works buildings is moving along pretty well. They were twelve uh twelve percent complete with the project as of the end of December. Uh they've completed the foundations and poured the uh floor slab for the wastewater building on Monday. And the other one is uh getting the rest of its internal utilities done and I expect they'll be pouring it in another week or so. And we should start seeing the walls go up on that pretty shortly then, you know, start looking, looking like a building. The other thing they're working on is the site utilities and those are coming along pretty well. Uh it's a busy site down there, it's been used for other things in the past, so we have. Ran into a few conflicts, but nothing major, uh we did have one rather large change order, which you will see when I get it finalized. Uh for digging out some unsuitable soils under the, under the uh new operations building. So um we have our pre-construction conference with Colacuccio Brothers on our. Intersection improvements uh set up for next week on Wednesday. And we'll hopefully get a schedule from then on them on when that work is going to actually start in the field. I've been mentioning that we have a pretty long lead time on uh signal poles, uh the submittals have been reviewed and approved. So the contractor should be able to get those uh in the queue for production and confirm that schedule sometime in the next week or so. Uh beyond that, we're just continuing our our ongoing uh design projects and we'll be. Uh issuing some calls for consultants for several projects coming up here in the next two to three weeks. Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mark?
Madam Mayor, this, this is Councilman Owen.
Yes, go ahead.
I was just gonna run it by Mark, it it's a corner of Waldron and Ball. That fir tree that stands in the corner, there's a lot of brush laying alongside the road and it's been there since the windstorm and. I wonder if should this city take care of that or should the city get a hold of the uh property owners and have them remove it?
I'll have Nathan look at that uh Councilmember Owen and uh we'll make a determination on that and move forward with it. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, we will move on to um Building, Director of Building and Prince, John Coleman.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um so I've been, we, our building inspector Barry's been out sick this week, so probably seen me out and about around in town doing. Inspections, uh so I've been taking up a lot of my time this week. And uh I've been following about four or five legislative items that. Have been proposed uh at the state legislature. Most of them are just kind of interest of, may have some impact on the planning department. But there's two in particular that um you've probably heard about and that we're following a little, a lot closer. So there's uh Senate Bill sixteen sixty, which addresses accessory dwelling units. Um the the net effect of that is it's proposed right now and it'll probably change is. Uh it slightly change our accessory dwelling unit regulations from the way they're currently written. It's hard to tell exactly how significant the 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 changes will be because, you know, every year. Uh if you've been following along every year, there's uh some sort of ADU legislation and. Uh most years, something passes and and then uh but it tends to be pretty watered down, so none have really had a a major effect on the city so far. Um so we're keeping an eye on that one. The other one that um would have uh much more significant impact on. On the city and the planning department is uh House Bill seventeen eighty-two and it's uh. And there's a partner bill in the, in the Senate also. This is the bill that you may have heard about, um that is looking at allowing. Multi-family uses in all single-family zones, so what, what. Way it's written right now, I've only had a chance to go over this briefly. Is um it would allow duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes in all single-family zones. So. That's in uh cities of ten thousand and under, uh or ten thousand and over. The the cities twenty thousand and over and fifty thousand and over have the much, much bigger impacts. Um but we, you know, we're still under twenty thousand, so the impact on us is. A little less than than the other jurisdictions, the larger jurisdictions. Um again, it's early in this process, but it's something that we're, we're keeping a close eye on and, you know, using. Uh the information that we've gained from the council over the years to to potentially give feedback on these bills if necessary, so. If you have any questions about those, uh I'd be happy to talk to you offline sometime. Uh or you can read about it on the the leg site on your own, but um so far. Of the the past, the their their first legislative committees and it has moved on, but. Uh we'll see, there's usually major changes to these legis, this legislation before it comes through and then there's always the opportunity. Even if something passes that uh that the governor vetoes part or in whole, uh like they did, like you did with the ADUs last year. Uh there was legislation that the, that would have required ADUs. In all jurisdictions, uh but the mayor heard them, sorry, the governor vetoed a part of that bill, so it came out and. Uh the bill ended up being passed, um didn't have a whole lot of effect, so we won't get too excited in the meantime. That's all I have to report, thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for this woman?
Yeah, John. Councilman Allen here, uh what is the intent of, are we just trying to warehouse people? For the sake of warehousing them now, is that what the states? Is that what the states tried to do?
No, um you know, they usually have some sort of statement explaining uh what what the purpose is and. For the ADUs, um the, the language is more to the effect of, you know, affordable housing is. Is a crisis and in order to make uh more affordable, you know, ADUs are affordable. Uh housing mechanism in the state's view or in the, in the author's uh view, so. Allowing ADUs uh to be built more uh easily is a way they see to allow. Uh housing prices to to come down or for people who can't afford uh mercury housing to have a place to live. Similarly with the, the, the House Bill seventeen eighty-two, which is changing the, the single-family zone potentially. That is uh by allowing uh what they, what is termed middle housing, so the duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes. In single-family neighborhoods, it allows for more opportunities for those types of housing, which the um, you know, the authors of these bills. Also see as a way to accommodate a uh more affordable housing, so. Not everybody can afford a house, not everybody can afford a fancy condo, not everybody can afford. A, a single-family uh uh trailer, uh you know, mobile home. So uh apartments are just one more. Apartments and middle housing, the the duplex, triplex and fourplex. Are seen as another way to bring uh more affordable housing to cities. So by allowing it in more zones, the idea is that um it would spread out the impact and not create areas that are all apartments. And uh also with the duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes, they're seen as a less impact. On neighborhoods than say, you know, a forty-unit apartment building. So these are, those are the principles involved, um that's really uh been up to the cities at to this point to. Be able to dictate where they, uh where these sorts of housing are allowed. This is, this legislation would be preemptive of a lot of the the city's. Uh previous ability to to manage these issues and um. For the record, the uh the Association of Washington Cities has both of these bills on uh the opposed list. So our AWC legislative lobbyists are not in support of these. And they're out there trying to either um find ways to stop these bills or make them palatable to the city. So that's, that's where the cities have the ability to input uh by speaking with AWC. And also directly at legislative sessions, if we so choose, to give our feedback. Uh to help our lobbyists that be better informed and uh make stronger arguments in our favor.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Laka.
Hey, no, Director Coleman, I was wondering with the comprehensive plan, if that bill were to pass, does that affect how many already approved units? Uh living units are there if they say single, somebody's single-family homes, I think ours is at forty-five hundred units. If they do something like that, does that increase that number automatically or is that just mean where they would normally have built this one unit, this single-family home? Now they're building a fourplex, that means three other homes could be built somewhere else.
So what that would mean is um if we were to allow more density in our existing zones, that would mean we would have more capacity. To accommodate our, our projected growth. It wouldn't necessarily. Mean that more people would move here faster, although, you know, if if people wanted to build fourplexes and. Triplexes more often, you know, that could be the net effect. But uh your, your point about uh will that change our projected population? So I haven't read this legislation and uh the way they've done these in the past is they say that cities can. Make the, you know, are required really to uh make these changes to their zoning without having to. Uh analyze the specific impacts of the increased density on our population expectations. Um at least not at the time that they're initially adopted, um when we go back, when we go in twenty twenty-five. Uh to do our land capacity analysis and see how much land we have available and how many people we can. Uh accommodate in our existing urban growth area. Um we'll re, we'll relook at those calculations instead of saying. Only single-family homes in the, the single-family neighborhoods. Uh which would be, you know, estimated at about two point seven people per. Uh per quarter acre or so, it would be, you know, more people, so it would, it would show that. What the math will end up saying is that we would be able to accommodate more people in our existing urban growth area and we wouldn't need. To expand our urban growth area to accommodate future population growth, or at least maybe not as much if we allow more. In our existing neighborhoods. So it's not going to be a a major impact at the time, they usually give the cities a pass on that when they're, especially when the legislature is trying to. Encourage or or require more density.
At one point, would we be able to get a um kind of a uh growth chart from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand sixteen? And see what the population was, percentage it grew from two thousand, from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand sixteen? And then weigh that against that projected growth from two thousand sixteen to two thousand thirty-six and if. You know, see, see how that relates with this new bill, I'm, if the new bill passes, it doesn't sound like we'll have much weight, but at least we'll be able to analyze. What the growth looks like on that.
So our comprehensive plan does have the the facts to figures about how many people, um how, with the growth from two thousand five to two thousand sixteen. And previous, um you may have to dig a little to find it, but it it's in there. Um and then.
Uh or is it piece, piece together, is there a way to get it in a chart with the percentage growth? To say at this point, we started with this population and at this point we ended with this and that was that percentage growth, I know that we're the. The, the comprehensive plan looks like forty-five hundred homes with about two point seven people per home. So we kind of know what that projected growth looks like, I was just wondering, is it, is it easy to find just a chart that shows what that growth is like?
He um, yes, that data is available, um and the, the. The Skagit Council of Governments Technical Advisory Committee um were the, which is the planners of each of the jurisdictions. We did that analysis back in two thousand five and six when we're coming up with our twenty thirty-six projections. So we looked at the growth projection for the county and each of the jurisdictions from uh, from. The previous twenty years, the previous ten years to that and previous ten years, so we could see that trend line. And that's what we used to determine what our trend line into the future would be. Um we're go, we're uh getting ready to embark on that process again in twenty twenty-four um with the county. Um as we look at our future projections, right now it's uh, you know, we're, we're scheduled to update our. All of these projections in whole by uh twenty twenty-five, June of twenty twenty-five. Uh but there just so happens to also be a uh legislative bill that would push that out uh two more years. Instead of an eight-year update cycle, they're looking at making it a ten-year update cycle, so. Well, right now we're planning on doing this update in twenty twenty-five. I can find that data for you, I I can't really point you to it, I can point you to the comp plan, but it sounds like you're already in there and you're not seeing the chart you're looking for, so. I'll, I'll uh work with SCOG to to find all that data for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. Um moving on to City Attorney Nikki Thompson, good evening, Nikki.
Mayor, um I will keep this brief, our office.
Our office is overwhelmed right now with processing a case backlog of seven hundred and forty-four old cases along with the new cases that are coming from the PD. On the criminal side of things, we've got two staff members and one attorney working on this and spending a great deal of time trying to dig us out. The Nelson condemnation, we have scheduled for a possession and use hearing that's been rescheduled a couple of times because of service issues on the estate. However, we now have six attorneys involved, which is approximately four too many, in my opinion. But we've got that scheduled for two weeks from Friday. And so hopefully the city will have possession of the Nelson property on Friday, two weeks from now. The other exciting news is that our firm, as of next week, will have changed its name. We sent you a letter a few months ago talking about our upcoming change and rebranding. So the vinyl went on the door today. And as of next week, we will officially be Thompson, Gildner and Associates. And so that is exciting news and we are looking forward to sharing our new brand with you. So expect emails from a different email.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yep. Are there any questions for Nikki? Okay, hearing none. Thank you. And congratulations again. Our city administrator, Charlie Bush.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Just a couple of items tonight. I've got an item a little bit further down on the agenda as well. First item, the inter-local agreement with the PUD for fire hydrant maintenance that you may have read about in the paper recently. Shortly after that article came out, I talked with George, the general manager at the PUD. And the PUD would like to do an assessment of the fire hydrants in the city, a further assessment to look at their condition, potential maintenance needs, type of stuff. And it's going to take several months to get through that assessment. So that means our inter-local agreement is going to be on hold for a little while, probably until late this year before we can bring it back to you for potential action. So I just want to give you a heads up on that. We will get there, but it's going to take some time and everybody just wants to make sure we have as much information as possible before we enter into that agreement. The second item tonight is, I'm really delighted to mention that we had an offer accepted today for the finance director position. Connie Anderson, who works at the, works at the city of Squim. She's the Deputy Administrative Services Director. I worked with her for five years there. She's been there for fifteen years. And prior to that, worked in the private sector in accounting and finance. She's going to be at least recommended to the council to be the finance director. And we'll bring an employment contract to you as well on February ninth. I can just say that Connie is fantastic to work with. I was delighted that she had an interest in coming to Cedar Woolley. And of course, my light goes off in the middle of my report. And yeah, she's bringing a lot of energy and excellent at helping improve systems, has a wide-ranging knowledge of finance, a lot of background, a lot of experience. And we worked through a lot of change when I was in Squim together. So I'm just delighted that she's ready to join the team and trusted to join the team. I look forward to sharing more about Connie with you all in a couple of weeks. And that concludes my report. Unless there are questions.
Are there any questions for Charlie?
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, so it's kind of a two-part question. Can you walk us through what we are using to get the word out that we are looking for key leadership positions? And are we somehow missing the mark on getting the word out for local qualified candidates?
So for key leadership positions, at least in this situation, we knew that we had a vacancy coming up very quickly. Frankly, at the end of February. And so in this particular case, we laid on some referrals. We interviewed two candidates. Connie was one of them. There was another candidate from another community referenced to us from our staff that people had worked with. And we vetted both of those candidates, both with the mayor and myself, as well as with the full finance department. And had those candidates not worked out, we would have been looking at a more formal recruitment process, but that is the process we used in this case.
Okay, thank you.
Question on that. On that, are we required to advertise a position on to, out to the general public such as a private business would do? If they have a position opened up, they can, they would have to have it advertised, even though they might even know who they want to give it to or the preferred person. Do we have a time that we have to have that open?
We are not required to do so. Nikki, correct me if I'm wrong. We're not required to do so. The city has not always done that in the past. It's really been dependent upon the circumstances of the vacancy and how quickly we needed to fill it. That said, it is a common practice and certainly one that we use most of the time at the city.
There is a legal requirement to put something out for an employment advertisement or anything.
Cool. Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, having been through this process three times already as mayor, I can tell you it is a very lengthy and drawn-out process. And so I really felt quite blessed that we had two very qualified candidates that came to us at a very, in a very short period of time. And we are, we were lucky that we had the opportunity to make a decision, interview them and have that opportunity to bring somebody in, especially as we're getting ready to do the budget. So we're preparing that twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. That's something that's going to be a big deal. And I don't know, Debbie, if you would like to share some of this? Because I, I know we had discussion on this when you were talking about your retirement, so.
Yeah, I can just say that I probably get two to three recruitment of flyers every month for finance directors due to a lot of finance directors or a lot of government employees, or actually a lot of employees everywhere choosing to retire. The market is pretty slim when it comes to finding qualified government financial directors. So when Charlie brought this opportunity, I totally support it. I individually had an interview with Connie and made sure that I felt comfortable that she would be a good fit. And my whole team actually interviewed Connie as well. And so I want to recognize that they were part of the hiring process.
Yes, thank you. So yeah, kind of put her through the wringer all of us talking to her. But she, I think she's wonderful. I honestly believe that you're going to enjoy working with her. And the women in the finance department asked some excellent questions. And they really did. And I think that that kind of validated what we felt about her when Charlie and I talked with her and met with her. So, yeah. So thank you, Debbie. Appreciate that. Okay. So moving on to council, we'll move on to the council and I'll begin with you. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Kestie.
I have nothing tonight.
All right. Councilmember Burns.
Nothing, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Diamond.
We covered my main issue tonight with Chief Tucker. Thank you. So that is first and foremost, and I look forward to the committee having having a meeting and that being a topic of discussion. Other than that, the Cedar Woolley Little League Girls State Tournament is still looking at being hosted here in Cedar Woolley. They are not sure if it's going to be the second or third weekend in July. They're currently waiting for approvals from regional directors and timelines for all of the different people that need to come into play. Once I have more information on that, I will let everybody know. I do believe that we, just like we did in the last time, would have a conversation with public safety regarding the possibility of having some volunteers coming out to the playfields and assisting with any sort of aid services and that sorts of stuff. We are also, with everything going on, aware of COVID regulations and closely monitoring that in regards to how it would play out with the tournament in and of itself, as well as the extra activities that could go on around it. When we held the state tournament in the past, we had a kind of like a street fairs-type carnival at Hammer Heritage Park, shut down the street and had a lot of businesses and stuff involved. That may or may not be an option this year, depending on how things go and what's going on. And so what, once I have a little bit more information, then we'll be able to kind of discuss that and address and see how involved the city or the businesses, hopefully with a discussion with the chamber and that sorts of stuff that really get people involved and see if that's something that could happen. Right now, they are currently looking at only needing to use Janiki playfields based on the number of teams that would be coming into town. But we're looking at ways that they could draw people into the downtown to really promote our businesses and show them some hospitality here. So, so once I have more information, I'll let you guys know about that. That's really all I have at the moment.
Thank you. Yeah, that was really fun. Couple of years ago when the tournament was here. So I'm sincerely hoping that it works out again this year. It was just great for everybody. Okay, thank you. Moving on to Councilmember McGoffin.
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to thank Debbie and her team, the finance department, for the successful audit. You guys did a great job. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Lavaca.
No, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, thank you very much, Debbie. I did watch that video. It was very good. And I'm very appreciative of that as far as the audit goes and everything you've done. So congratulations on being able to take some time away and enjoy life. I think that's important. As far as the committees, I am pretty new at this. So I don't know how to actually situate or organize or get with the committees. So Mark, I believe I sent an email out to you about just getting together. I know that we share a couple of committees as your liaison on that. So maybe we could touch base and see what that looks like and how we actually set those up. I'm also looking forward to being involved in that safety committee as well. As far as like the Little League coming out, just as an idea, I wonder if businesses would sponsor tents that they have and maybe have some booths out there as part of that food court or something. You know, they have things that they have that can advertise their business just right there near the playfield or at the playfield as a way to draw people in. And I think in the parks and recreation, we might be able to look at that as a committee just to see his ideas to kind of, you know, maybe bring downtown to the park. In a way, you know, not completely, but it could be an idea to stir people's attention or curiosity to come into downtown. And that could be a lot of fun, too. So I'm looking forward to, I'm looking forward to our next work session. I'm looking forward to this next year and everything. And I just appreciate you guys. So thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Owen.
I have nothing, Mayor.
All right, thank you. And Councilmember Allen.
This is for Debbie. Thank you for the service you've given to our city. Retirement can be wonderful or sad. I hope you have a great retirement and Godspeed be with you. Okay?
All right, thank you. Just a couple of items tonight from me. First off, I do want to extend my gratitude and thanks to Debbie. And gotta tell you, I'm a little bit envious. It sounds wonderful being able to retire. So thank you, Debbie, for all that you provided here. You really got that finance team working in a way where I think they feel like family. You know, with the changes that have happened, you came along and you really united them. And I think that that's fantastic. So thank you for doing that. Congratulations again to Nikki Thompson being made partner. I think that that's outstanding. You know, good for you. And what an accomplishment. Fantastic. Couple of things I did want to also mention, the audit report. I'm so glad that that was brought up by a couple of the council members. It was a very clean, very wonderful audit report. Hi, Marks. Debbie, do I have this right? It's known as a manager's? It was a manager's letter that we received, is that right? Which is one of the highest comments that we could, or a letter that we could receive. Is that correct?
Yes, the main issue is that there were no findings. So that's the most important piece. There's always recommendations of improvement, which that's one of the reasons I appreciate when the auditors come out. There's always improvement areas for us. But yeah, as a whole in two thousand twenty, and they had no recommendations for improvement.
All right, thank you, Debbie. And then one last thing, something that I've asked the building department to do, I've asked John to do. And that is put in the council agenda, the permits that are happening, that the building department is working on, all the permitting. It has been on the council agenda before, but we haven't seen it over the last couple of years because of all the changes and whatnot that have happened. I remember as a council member, I found them really helpful. And so it'll give you a chance to look through them. And if somebody says, hey, what's going on down at whatever West Street? You know, you've got access to that. You can go back and look at the agenda and be able to say, well, hey, you know, that's, you know, a new building that's going up that's for a flower shop or whatever. But anyway, that gives you the opportunity to do that. It's information into your hands so that you can share that with your constituents. Listening to the COVID report, you know, I would love to bring us back together, but I am going to propose again that we take another month and just zoom and then go back to hybrid after that. I would love to be meeting in person, but there are so many people who are coming down with this Omnicrom. You know, as we have heard, most people, it doesn't hit very hard, but there are others who have been hospitalized. I don't want to put anybody in that position. So I'm going to do that unless I hear some strong opposition to that. But otherwise, through the month of February, we'll be, we'll be meeting online again. So thank you for your tolerance and your forbearance. It's greatly appreciated. And for me, the idea of safety is first and foremost. So I appreciate you supporting that as well. Tonight, we do not have any proclamations, but at this time it is seven oh seven and I will open a public comment. I don't know if I see anybody from the public online. But if there is, this is your opportunity to provide public comment. Okay, I am hearing none and I am seeing nothing showing up on the screen here. So we will move on. I will close public comment and we will move on to new business. We have no unfinished business tonight. So we will move on to new business. And the first item that we will be looking at is the electronic and digital signature policy. And Debbie, that is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. This item before you this evening is to approve a proposed electronic and digital signature policy. Currently, the city requires that all of our documents have what they call a wet signature, where the person has to be signing the documents in person with their, you know, with a pen. We would like to implement electronic and digital signature policy. This is consistent with the state law that changed in two thousand twenty in response to the COVID pandemic. But this is something that's been in process for many private companies. A lot of your home loans and mortgage companies and lots of other contractual relationships to use digital and electronic signatures. The signatures are created using a third-party platform. Those platforms use a a standard accepted format called Public Key Infrastructure or PKI. That allows it to provide highest levels of security and it also allows universal acceptance so that the document can be signed by, you know, different individuals using different platforms of software. The third-party program authenticates the signature so that you're, you know, we attest that the person signing it is the person that we want to be signing documents. This would be implemented for the documents, the contracts that the city does, our resolutions, especially work that we do back and forth with our attorney's office. It will really make those processes much more efficient. And so I ask you, I know typically we do have two readings of an item, but this is something we would really like to implement. If so, if the council sees a favor into this policy, I would really like to have your approval before. If there, if the council sees a favor into this policy, I would really like to have your approval for this policy this evening. And that concludes my report. I'm here to answer any questions. And when it comes to the technical side of it, I've asked Bill to be available to me and to you to answer those really technical questions. So thank you. That's my report.
All right. Thank you, Debbie. Are there any questions for Debbie?
Madam Mayor, I have one question.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Do we know the cost per month or per year for the third party service?
We don't know the exact cost at this time. But I don't think it's going to be for, you know, a significant investment at this time. So if it is anything that's significant, we would definitely bring the contract for that back to council for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Lavaca.
I was, I was wondering if this is an all or nothing deal. There is something about being able to meet together to sign a document, I feel. So maybe the notary documents would be something that can be done in person. I do appreciate DocuSign myself. I've used it quite often, but I just, I, I hate to get into a situation where we're not even meeting together to sign documents or to associate with each other in person. So is there, is this an all or nothing? I guess is my question.
No, this is not all or nothing. This just gives us the opportunity to utilize the electronic and digital signatures. Right now, we don't have a policy that allows us to do that. So what?
Would we be able to write into this like, hey, for notaries, they must be done in person possibly?
And we could do that. Again, it looks like our attorney might have some comments. So I will defer to her response.
Just that you don't want to do that. I would suggest that you want to give people the option to do that remote notary. And I'll give you one example as to why. We have the BUCO Development Agreement that we recently approved. And the BUCOs, they live in Oregon and that document does need to be notarized. And so it is somewhat more complicated to take my wet signature and the city's wet signature on it and then send those originals down to Oregon for them to have their wet signatures notarized. And if we had the option to utilize that remote notary or to utilize electronic signatures, that would speed up the process and make it a bit more efficient. So, you know, I don't think that most people are going to utilize that remote notary option, but it's probably not something that you want to take off the table just for that reason alone.
I, I see it being convenient. So after, after maybe a couple of years, COVID's passed and it's something that we utilize a lot or end up utilizing a lot. So possibly something like that. But I could definitely understand those situations and I know that we've done that in the past. And I've had to do that before to, to mail things out and wait for them to get back. And it does become an inconvenience to say the least. I do understand that. I don't, I just would hate to see us get too technologically advanced where we're, we're missing that personal encounter aspect of, of contracts and signing documents. Thank you so much.
Councilman Allen?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I, I really agree with Councilman Lavaca. There are certain things that we still have to keep. How many BUCO situations are there out there? You know, maybe three or four a year. So I, I would say I, I would like to keep in charge with wet signatures on certain, especially, you know, certain items and dealings with people. So anyway, that's my spin on it.
Okay, thank you. So anyone else? Um, I, I can tell you that we use it quite a bit between city and county. I sit on a number of boards and, and we have a lot of partnerships in our local agreements. So if we were to have everybody sign wet document as Nikki is calling it, you know, from Anacortes to Mount Vernon to concrete to Cedar Woolley. It, it gets to be quite complicated. We're sending out the DocuSign. You know, within a day or two, we can have that document ready to go and we can start moving forward with the policies or the projects that we're working on. So it has been quite beneficial for those of us who are working in those situations. So. And it's truly, I guess, truly part of the 21st century. We're here. Wow. We're here. Okay, um, do I hear a motion at all? Or that, well, actually, yeah, do I hear a motion at all for this? You want to make a motion at all for this?
Madam Mayor, Councilman McGoffin, I move to approve Resolution 108522 for the electronic and digital signature policy.
All right. Thank you. Sarah Second. Okay. All right, Councilman Owen. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman McGoffin and Council, and a second by Councilman Owen to approve Resolution 108522 Electronic and Digital Signature Policy. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number two, this is a first read, ordinance number 200322, an amendment to the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code, Chapter 2.02, the mayor's description. And Charlie Bush, we're going to turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. And this is really providing more detail to the description of the mayor's role at the city. So currently, Chapter 2.02 has two sentences that really reference the mayor's salary. But, but no further detail. We, as you can see here, referenced RCW 35A12090, which gets into the abilities of the mayor to hire or remove officials. And then we pulled in inspiration from other cities as well. And I need to give credit to my predecessor, Doug Merriman, for doing a lot of this work, along with Nikki Thompson, our city attorney. But we pulled in pieces of code from other cities that have strong mayors. And I have to say, from my time working here, this is a pretty accurate description of how our mayor operates. So the goal here is really to provide more definition, more clarity for, for everybody in terms of the role of the mayor. And we're happy to, to cover a lot more detail as you wish this evening. But that's what we're after here is just trying to provide more specificity to the role of the mayor. So happy to take any questions. Happy to walk through it in more detail if you'd like.
Yes, Councilman Lavaca.
Thank you. Charlie, I was wondering on that descriptions, because I read through the, or not read through, perused through, I should say, our municipal code in the chapters one up to 28. And I was just wondering, are, is everything that's within that description, the mayor contained within the municipal code? Or is there things that are described or clarified that maybe aren't in there? Or I'm not sure how that works out.
Yeah. And now I'll probably defer to Nikki a little bit on this, but there are things in here that are not reflected in the rest of municipal code where, where they're providing, providing more clarity than what you're going to find in other parts of the code for sure. Go ahead, Nikki.
Yeah. So, so most of this is coming from the RCWs. The RCWs identify the different roles of the executive versus the legislative branch. And like Charlie said, the information about what mayors do is contained in 35A12090 and, and 100. The mayor is sort of the chief executive officer of the city. That role supervises all of the departments of the city and the employees of the city. It's charged with enforcing the laws of the city and it sort of implements the policies of the city council. It, it, that role is tasked with just the overall administration of the city. So there was nothing like that in your code, which is a part of why we thought it was important to sort of put that in because oftentimes the public has questions about what the roles and responsibilities are of the, of the executive versus the legislative body. And if you don't have that identified in code, it's, it's harder for the public to understand those roles. It also tends to be harder for, I think, elected officials to know what those roles are. And so this is just one step in our, in our process of cleaning up the code. And there will likely at some point be a suggestion to council that we clean up the code related to city council and what the city council does. So you're right that there isn't a lot of information that's in this piece of code that is contained in other pieces of code because quite frankly, it's not supposed to be in, in other pieces of the code. This is about what the mayor does. There is of course reference to the mayor's contract authority, which is in Title III of the code. But beyond that, this is what explains the mayor's role.
Are there any other questions or discussion? Okay, scene. And this is a first read. So this will be coming back to you, I believe, on the ninth, right? Is it the ninth? Yeah, it'll be coming back to you on the ninth. Okay. And then moving on to the first read, appoint members to the Salary Commission. Appointment of the members to the Salary Commission. And Debbie Burton, this is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So as you recall, in November, the city council approved ordinance 199521, which established the Salary Commission that will review and set salaries for elected officials for the city of Cedar Woolley. One of the first steps on that ordinance is to appoint the Salary Commission. The mayor is recommending the five individuals listed in your packet this evening. They are Phil Brockman, Tim Lair, Rebecca Scrin, Fred Osterhout, which I need to apologize. We'll get his name spelled right when you get this for final approval. And Becky Taff. So the terms of the Salary Commissioners is six years. However, with the first group of Salary Commissioners, we are going to be staggering their terms. And so I am proposing that two of the members will have a six-year term to, uh, one of the members, or two of the members will have a five-year term and one of the members will have a four-year term. That way they will rotate off and there'll always be someone on the commission that's had past experience. So those terms will be determined at the first meeting of the commission. So again, tonight, this is just the first read of the mayor's recommended appointments. And this will be coming back for approval also on February 9th, if we move forward. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for Debbie at this time? Yes, Councilman Burns?
My only question is, how were the people picked? And how will they pick the staggered order at their first meeting?
So I'll answer your second question and then I'll defer to the mayor. These were the mayor's referred appointments. So that, that will be done by consensus at the first commission meeting. So probably by volunteering. That's typically how it happens. We, you know, we'll look, we'll look for two people to take the sixth term and so on and so forth. So. And at that meeting, we will also pick a chair of the commission, which, so that they will help, you know, monitor, lead the meetings and, you know, as we work through things. So I hope that answers that question and I will let the mayor answer the first part.
Thank you.
Yeah. So for the, for a couple of the individuals, they actually volunteered. They actually sent me email and they said that they would like to be on it. And some of the qualify, qualifications that I was looking for were people who had ran organizations or businesses. They had a good knowledge of balancing budgets of what, what pay is involved in, in the people that they work with. So I was looking for people that were actually engaged in a more business sense, who actually had a sense of how to go about assessing and looking at, looking at people's wages and making a determination based upon their, their background and their knowledge. So does that answer the question?
Yes, yes, it does. Thank you, Mayor Johnson.
Yeah. Hey, is there anything else? All right. Well, that is it for tonight. We have covered our business. The next meeting is going to be February 2nd. It'll be a study session. We'll be going over the resolution presented by Councilman Lavaca. If there isn't anything for the good of the order, then we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.